How about this? Okay, okay, well, thank you Mayor Soswiko. Good evening, I would have noticed, Todos Santos. A great opportunity to be here in the wonderful village of Haga. And I want to welcome all the mayors that are here from Talofofo and Umatak and Inalahan. And Angitafatán.
Salaviga.
Salavita, Angi, Angi, she was the mayor de El.
Tamalangi.
Tamalangi. Now, I just want to, first of all, this is the first time we tried this. And so I just wanted a chance to explain exactly what we think we're doing here in the Nanloga in Comision Nippon Tamaro. There are certain responsibilities that have been given over to the commission in Comision Nippon Tamaro, the Tamaro Language Commission, reference to place names. And so I want to take the opportunity to go through that a little bit. Then what we'll do is we'll take the Senator Tytenwe, I want to acknowledge your presence here. We'll take a couple of words and then we'll take the mayors up one at a time. And I want to thank Mayor Soswiko for his hospitality and also the Vice Mayor Chris Mera. And it's great because, you know, we were only expecting water, though, Vantilakilis and Atuline Lotes, there you go. Who can beat that? We'll see what they do for us in the central. Maybe we won't even get water in the central, I don't know. No, I'm just kidding. We don't want to set up any kind of competition. But this is a very serious endeavor, we're taking it very seriously. And just to let you understand the distinction here, and we'll go through it real quickly here, okay? The Comision Nippon Tamaro has the, this is the law on Guan place names. So the Comision Nippon Tamaro has jurisdiction over place names. Separate that from street names, which belong to the mayors, and separate that from schools, which belong to the Board of Education, and then separate that from facilities, government of Guam facilities, which generally belongs to the legislature. So, you know, sometimes like Iba is now Joseph Flores Memorial Park. So, separate that out. But in between all of that, there is the names of the municipalities and the districts. So because it is the Guan legislature that establishes the districts, at the end of the day, it's the Guan legislature that has to pass into law the names of the districts. And so what we're doing, as I said, is we're going to recommend, inconsistent with the requirements of the law, that the place names, that first of all, the village names be restored to Tamaro pronunciation, which is required by the law, spelled in accordance with the orthography. So that's basically our task here. So I won't prejudice anyone by saying, but I don't know that there are the villages that are up for consideration this evening, that there's any, there's much disagreement. There might be, I don't know. People might say, no, I want it to stay this way, or I want it to move in another direction. I have no idea. But basically, I think we're most agreement with that general direction. The place names is a separate process. So the place names are going to create perhaps some controversy. Because place names, there's a lot of place names that have come to common usage, that have put out both original names. And the Comision has to study that and try to make a recommendation in accordance with the law and the criteria, which is primarily to restore old Tamaro place names. So I'll give the most common example that I use are the two places that I've lived in the longest, Basah Gardens and Jonestown. Now neither Basah Gardens nor Jonestown are traditional Tamaro place names. So the question arises, should those place names be changed to the original place name? If we can find out what it is and if there's general agreement about what that is? And will the community support that, or will they be so outraged? Or, I'm pretty sure. That's going to take a little bit more thought. And so I'm sure that the legislature and its wisdom doesn't really want to get involved in that, and they're just, Comision Nippon Tamaro is the one that's going to deal with those place names. But we'll find that a lot of place names are going to resurface, they're going to resurface in maps that are really interesting and they're reflective of our culture. By the way, this is Alicia Santos, Comision Nippon Tamaro. And accompanying me with the Nan Committee, a Comité Nanloga, Senora Teres, Senor Jimmy Teria, who are also members of the Comision. Okay, so what we're going to do is the first thing here is the southern, and so these are the place, the district names that are up for consideration. Of course, public law has already jumped the gun on Inalahan, which we understood what's going on, and I just, it's okay. But we want to be able to be allowed to present the name so that the legislature can respond appropriately. So next, we're going to take the central villages, and then in the following month, in the final month, we're going to take the northern villages. And we have Arbiter, Igatay, Sepulsa, Tamafo, Piti, Ashan, Aganiaj, Sinanya, and Tumata. Northern, I put these in question marks. The official title of that municipality now is Tamuning Tuma. It's not Tamuning Tuma and Harmon. That's just kind of a convention that has been followed. So in accordance with the requirements of the law, a minimum we're going to change that to Tamuning Omho. And so the part about that that's unclear is whether you want to add Harmon. And the other part is that Tamuning is the one place name in Guam that is clearly not a Tamaro place name. It's a Carolinian name, it's a name of the, the name given by the Carolinians who lived in Apotquan. So that area in Apotquan, which is where the onward hotel is, that's where the Carolinians used to live, and they named it Apotquan. And they named it Tamuning, although they were living in Apotquan. And so over time, the Carolinian name prevailed. So that's an historical reality, but again, that's one of those things that has to be kind of researched carefully and a decision, a rational decision has to be. Okay, the next slide. And then we hope to start in the same sequence with place names, starting with the southern, central, and northern over the following three months. And by that time, we will have divided up the island, we will have all the existing place names, a lot of conflicts, a lot of conflicting place names, nobody knows who makes maps, who's supposed to make the map, who is supposed to coordinate with the mapmaker? And the mapmaker turns out to be USGS, it's the US Geological Service. And the USGS will be happy, and believe me, I know this, they will be happy to have a government of Guam agency to coordinate with. Otherwise, they're left to competing claims by the Department of Defense, by individuals, and by various agencies. So that leads to a lot of confusion about various place names. It also unclear what is meant by a place name. You know, a street is not a place, but Pox Junction, for example. Is Pox Junction a street name, or is it a place name? And who in the heck is Pox? And why does he get a junction named after him? And was there a name for that area before? And it turns out there was. So that's, that's, that's that kind of issue. So that's going to be a lot of, it's going to be an ongoing project, not ever going to be fully resolved once and for all. But whatever results from this that we present to the USGS, I think we'll end up showing up on the maps for coming years. And we modeled after the whole state of Hawaii. And the state of Hawaii has a process in place. Many of you who have traveled to Hawaii know they're very insistent on Hawaiian place names, and they're very insistent on Hawaiian pronunciation of place names. And no matter how many vowels they have, they have, you know, four or five syllables with, you know, eight or nine vowels. And you're trying to pronounce it, but you can't get it right, but they're pretty insistent on it. So that's, I predict that there'll be that level of interest here. It's also important to note that once people know a place name, they're going to try to understand it more, they're going to feel more connected, they're going to feel like they're more understanding of who was here before them. Why is this place name, why is that place name as Lucas? In Talofofo, Angitafatán, Angitafatán, as Tumbo, as Tumbo, as Spango, as Spago. What do we know, how come there's no as Underwood? That's what I want to know. There's only as Spago, as Tumbo, as Lucas, but there's no as Underwood. What happened? So those are the kind of things that are going to have to be researched out, and people are going to learn more about where they are. And I think it's important, it helps kids feel better about where they're from, and it helps them understand and connect more. And then lastly, the place names there, just a quick thing. Place names include names for rivers, mountains, geographical points, and so as places. And it's important to understand that rivers don't all have the same name depending on where you're standing in the river. So some rivers easily has another name further up. So there's going to be those issues as well that have to be sorted out. So it's not always the same river. And also in Tamaro, just so that we understand how people name places, very rarely there's a, there's no Tamaro word for a beach. Or, so if someone says, this is called Unai Baput, like in Saipan, they're really saying, this is Baput Shan, which is sort of like a beach. But that concept is not really in the way that the Tamaro places. In Guam, sometimes you'll hear Tashi, like they'll say, oh, Tashina. And again, they're trying to say it's a beach. But in that instance, the concept of naming a place a beach is actually not a Tamaro concept. That's a concept that comes from the outside. Tamaro just give you singular names. So when they say Sabana and Magash, and they're naming a mountain after Magash, that sounds like a very recent development, as opposed to Sasalagman, which is a mountain in Madesso, and everybody knows it's Sasalagman. They don't have to say Sabana and Sasalagman, they know that that's, that's a mountain. So there's those things to sort out as well. And that's part of this approval plan, is moving forward with the, with the Plan Unit Development. So Plan Unit Development are the developments that have changed most of the names on Guam. So Batagard, who gets the name at Batagard? Well, Kaiser built it, and so they named it Batagard. Why do they get the name at Batagard? Who gave them the authority to do that? And, and, and so the question becomes, the place belongs to the people of Guam. You know, so you, we're going to try to work Guam really on this. An example I gave is there's a young man who works, very good at reading, who helps us on this, Nathan Habana, Dr. Nathan Habana, who works in the University of Guam. And he, I should have done, you know, like Windward Hills. He goes, well, I live in Windward Hills. I live in Windward Hills Estates. I said, yeah, but that put out originally. He said, what's that? I said, Maleto. He goes, that's why I live on Maleto Street. As it turns out, the street that he lives on in Windward Hills is called Maleto. So somebody was trying to remember it, you know? So there's all the cases. But like I said, you know, there is still Batagard, Kaiser, old Kaiser. You know, sometimes the legislature steps in, remember when everyone used to say, oh, low cost? And everyone said, then they don't like it because it sounds so, you know, like you're, you know, you're putting the people down there. So they passed it into law, calling it full. And did that have changed? I don't know, did it change anything? I, I, what I'm wondering is why didn't they think about going back to what the original name of that place was? So that's the attention that's going to be created by. Meaning no respect to Mr. Jones or Mr. Basah. Because I think that's named after Ramon Basah, who's very distinguished, deserves a place named after. He got very distinguished, and maybe he deserves something named after. Okay, so the approval plan will be coordinated with the federal government. And then these are a bunch of maps, you can see that next slide. Some maps, here's a map, 1819 place name. You'll see some place names there that are continuing to exist. A military installation map, the military has changed not only the ownership, but the naming processes of the island. Next slide. 1980 Department of Land Management Division map. And then the last slide, I think. Now, we're going to get to the village names. So before we get there, I would like to give Senator Tytenwe, who's very interested in this topic, the opportunity to tell you something.
Thank you, I think I'm, I'm pretty bowled for hearing you, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. First, thank you, Dr. Underwood, in addition, for the opportunity to people here today and to people here today. And also with Tytenwe, by the way, and my chair as well. Cheers, thank you so much for your honesty, how we've been helping you. As Dr. Underwood mentioned, last week, we had a beautiful signing ceremony for the naming of, from Inalahan to Inalahan. Those that I constructed, you know, it's very powerful, you know, to talk from Inalahan. And I think I have plenty of relatives here in Agua, and here today to, to also say, Dr. Underwood, I did introduce legislation this evening. When I was talking to Inalahan about the name change, when they approached me, I took the opportunity to talk to the other mayors from Madesso, Agua, and Yumara, and ask them if they too would like to have their name changed as well, considering that this particular, these names are already, what would you say, Dr. Underwood, already spelled out correctly, already pronounced correctly, the glota on the A is there. So I did introduce it this evening, but with your direction and to ensure that everything is correct, I hope you're there at the public hearing, you know, to get the Comision's approval for moving it on the session floor. But after that, that's all I'm going to do for now, because as Dr. Underwood has mentioned, the other villages may be more difficult, you know, in deciding the correct name, you know, the native tongue. But, you know, this is very, very important. It's about our children and the next generation, you know, being able to, you know, say your native tongue and your village of where you're from. You're passing down gifts to these, to your children and the next generation, keeping our language alive. So I'm happy to be here, I'm happy to support this endeavor, I, I hope you too as well, and thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Okay, thank you. Are we on this one now? All right, here we go, here we go. Now, now I'll sound like I normally sound. Hopefully. Thank you very much, Senator Tytenwe. As, as you outlined, we certainly just asked that you allow us to complete this process for the southern villages, and, which we'll do tonight, and then we'll present it to the Comision next week, and in that way, that way we're kind of in sync with that. So, and I don't know that there's going to be any much controversy about the names. You know, One, the only time I ever hear Agua in, in Tamaro is when they say, yeah, Agua. So if you might give me a guide, Haga, Haga. And, and Haga, I just, just before I call up the mayor, I just want to say this, because sometimes people don't kind of understand the connection. Sometimes people are guessing. How often do you come to kill a Haga? Is it Haga? Is it like Ahaga? Is it Haga as in daughter? Sometimes they say, oh, Haga, and Haga, daughter and blood, they're connected. I don't think so. I think the, the connection that people ought to remember is that you have in, in Tamaro, a village, and a village is called Songsum. That's, that's the word for a village. A larger Songsum is Haga. That's a bigger Songsum. So Haga is bigger than a Songsum. And you want to know what the biggest Songsum is of all? Hagatny. That's the connection. Whatever Haga is, Mashnya Hagatny. In Jiginnamapanatan, Hagatny. So the connection between Haga and Hagatny is very close linguistically and procedurally. And so sometimes people want to guess at things, but they don't really want to kind of analyze what is the origin of that. So Songsum is village, Haga is like a town, and Hagatny must be really big. You know, it's the Mashnya Kiny Haga, Mash Haga Kiny Haga. Yeah, so we have to go back to the original. Okay, so I want to ask Mayor Soswiko and Vice Mayor Faire, and if they'd like to address the group and tell us what your sentiments are on this issue.
Good evening, everyone, I think I'll, I'll sound a little bit more normal too. I'm glad to see a lot of, you know, our, my, our MPCs here, I know that some of Mayor Dell's MPCs here too as well. And it's really important for us to play a part in this time in, in our history, like what Seder, Talo was just mentioning. It's not just because we want to change the name, or we want to follow suit with Hagatny, or we want to follow suit with Inalahan, it's really giving back to its original, its original name, especially for us down here in our municipality in Haga. And before, when you do the history of it, we were the, right, it was all Haga, and then it was Hagatny. So as the maps would show, after that, that's when slowly they started piecing out into different villages. And so that made a lot of sense, and you know, we learned something every day, and I just learned that 30 seconds ago. Because everyone's saying the same thing that they were saying, oh, so how did the word agative come in, or what was Haga? Or how did it even originate from? You know, and so the closest that we can get was it originated from the blackbirds before, when it used to crow, and they used to say Haga, right? So that's one of the stories to a history. But for us as the leaders of the village to give back to it and to now, at this time, return to its former name, it's more, I think it's more humbling in, in our hearts, especially us, you know, we're, we're really the, we're young leaders, we're the youngest leaders of this municipality, and at this point in time, what is the right time? And I think now's the time. Sure, we're going to get some individuals in the municipality that may not want to change it because of, by habit, or maybe they just don't want to change it, or some may say, you know, we're going to have to change our stamps, we're going to have to change our letterheads, we're going to have to change this. But that's all part of the growing process of doing something. The bigger picture is really giving back to our generations. We're not going to be here too much longer, I think, I, I will hopefully, I have like 40, 50 years left. But I want something to continue on, and if it's something that I want to continue on, or we want to continue on, is going back. You know, I made a joke about this earlier, to all of the ones that they say were from the Agua. I said, for these guys when we're growing up, what are they going to do now because they tattoo their stomach Agua? That was the joke I was saying earlier. Really, right? So now you're going to have to go back, and if truly your heart is within your village, and you're really fell in love with your village, then you're going to put the H on. Put it long on top of the A. But, you know, we can say what we want, but for me, deep in my heart, as the leader of the municipality, it's that time, it's that time to go back and go back into our culture. You know, we've been fostering things, we are the gateway to the south, we try and perpetuate the culture, the language, the history, and, you know, we have the Guma Zomti right next to us that we have here, we try our best to bring back, bring back to life that we've lost. And this is one of the biggest ways that we can actually do that. But my vice has more to say, maybe about 10 more minutes, so this. So on behalf of our MPC, and of course, our families and the vice mayor and our staff and Dr. Underwood, Mrs. Massey, Doc, and the Comision for coming down, and to Talo, thank you for leading the way for us, and we hope to see the, the bill come out soon. We're working on our petitions already, and we're working on all of our documents that we need to get going in full support, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Once again, good evening, welcome to the Songsum Haga. You know, like Dr. Underwood said, I, I think, and I'll reiterate what my partner said, I think it's time, I think the young generation has lost so much of our culture, and I think renaming the villages back to the original names is a start. Like he said, like Dr. Underwood said, it's going to make them curious, it's going to make them want to learn more about your village, about the, where, where the origin is from. And I think by starting that, it, it triples down to the, to the younger age, where they want to be interested and learn more of their language and our, our culture. I think we've been influenced by so many, you know, whether it be the Spanish or the US. But I think. Estamos en el limón todo el lingüaje cultural. Necesito que sepan hoy, que sepan hoy, que sepan hoy, que sepan hoy, of, y haleta, y den manuel, tal, tal manuel, and, you know, necesito que sepan hoy, que sepan hoy, la figura, la figura es la, la, you know, that's the problem, is applying, they put it up because of all the influence. Inano. It's better. No, no, la figura es la. I know that there's going to be a lot of resistance from, from the, or maybe not too much, but it's, it's mainly not because of the name, not because it's going back to the origin, but it's just because of all the paperwork that they have to do. And I think if the Comision or Senator Talo can, can emphasize more on, on whether it's going to be law that everything has to be changed, is there going to be fees? I think that's the biggest issue that, that I've heard so far, is do we have to pay for this and that to change everything? So it's not more about going back to the original language and, and our culture, but it's more about expense. And, you know, by all means, that's, it is a struggle to change everything. I mean, thank God I never got married, because I probably have to change my last name. Other than that, thank you guys so much, and let's move forward with this. I know our office, our staff, we support this, and we're hoping that everybody else can come on board with us and the Comision and Senator Talo. Thank you guys for, for your efforts, we appreciate it. Thank you guys for, for your efforts, we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, how are you? I have too many changes here. I am very happy and sad. And if anybody can tell me what's the name of San Rita tomorrow. Santarita, there you go. But, uh, yeah, so far I'm, I'm a minute to stay with San Rita, but maybe we can add on Sumai. Yeah, because of our ancestors coming from Sumai, we were located up there. So it's not much to say about San Rita, that it's the most beautiful village in the south.
Right, Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir.
What's your recommendation? And recommendation on Santarita to Sumai?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Anseña.
No, there's no charge.
No, no, as far as
If there's charges.
Oh, okay. But yes, I highly recommend Santarita to Sumai.
Okay, very good.
Thank you guys for, haga. Thank you for having me and your constituents, and Telo. You know, I don't have a problem naming it Komatak. It's going to come up, no matter what. The people of Yamada sometimes use that language or that word, Komatak. So I'm, I'm usually letting you know that I'm not going to have a problem naming this Komatak. It's a good name to bring our tomorrow culture back. Our tomorrow culture is not, you know, kids, a lot of kids are mostly into their cell phone. There's nothing, once you send somebody on this, they stay on this, the kids, just do that. We need more tomorrow, uh, uh, languages so that our people can keep it within the island because it's hurting us. It's MTV. I watch a lot of TV and I look at the tomorrow. It's not as much as before. I want to thank Telo for his bill and supporting this bill. And my constituents, thank you.
Anyways, you know, when you go back to languages, okay? It sounds more grammatically correct when you say, when you say, let's go down to Mariso, let's go down to Maleso. But trying it tomorrow, let's go down to Mariso.
Okay.
But that is grammatically correct tomorrow. So Maleso, as everybody knows, and even the people of Maleso know, they know this, that the Maleso was derived from the Manjha blood. So back then, all the Manjha, they go to Maleso. But anyways, I, I don't think I'm going to have a lot of options. And the concern about changing your stationery is mostly due to post office, and post office don't work by name, rather by zip code, so you don't have a problem. So if you're going to argue, there's something I learned, I went to college. I didn't get my degree, but I went to university and got my. So if you're going to change the name base, it's not going to affect your marriage, it's going to still come through. Let the post office here in Guam sort it out, where it's going to Maleso. Nine six nine one six. And GPA is nine six nine one six. Waterworks nine six nine one five. So it's still going to come to Maleso either way. But that, I, I, you know, I'd like to join the commission. It's going this way, that this is all going in the same direction, of course. Let's jump on the same timeline, so we don't have duplication of effort. Let's combine our efforts and move forward together. Because when we move forward together, those that resist, they better have a basis and a foundation for their argument. Because you're not going to argue against fun, but you're not going to argue against the money. So those that are going to argue against it, either, I don't know, like Mayor Kevin, I wish I could live another forty years, but I'm already sixty. So I hope I can go forty more years. But thank you, Senator, and Mayor, and Senator Delos. Thank you for the effort.
All right. Doctor, I'm just going to put my name down. Okay?
Palafofu.
Anyway, the pronunciation, the spelling, it's set, except the drop, right? So I don't foresee any problems. So there's no, no, there's no, that's a big issue. It's just a very simple changes, and I think we're ready to, you know, accept this, the go there in between. So again, it's beautiful, but better than gas country. Okay, Senator? Senator, we see the problem, you got my support on the program.
Okay. Let's give Mayor Tatala the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. One of the biggest drivers that made our songsum in Alahan wanted to move forward with changing this in a very thick order was number one, I feel that it's our responsibility as leaders, as Mayor Kevin mentioned, as mayors, we are leaders. And I think one of the things that we see right now is that we see this language, this culture that we currently have, slowly dying and dissipating. Eventually, if we don't, we don't act now like the action we're taking today, this culture, this language that we so-called tomorrow will eventually die. In my statement, in my testimony at the listening, I, I, I did say this. If this language is really going to die or someday reach extinction and no longer exist, we can actually stop that by, by at least naming our songsum, our villages, the actual tomorrow name. So in this case, Agatnya would never be, our language would never be lost as a direct result of Agatnya. We're adding that more now to the, to the songsum of Inalahan. Also, moving forward, haga, Maleso, Komatak, and now with the Glotas and the Talapofu. Obviously, we're in a very, uh, uh, I want to say to deep position. You know, I, for one, I've lost both my parents, so obviously that part of that language dies. Question is, is what about the rest of the other songsums? We still have elders, but we're also at a very critical point in our lives because as Mayor Bauta alluded to, a lot of them have already moved toward the cell phone use or what have you. Everything on their cell phone is tied into the English language and nothing tomorrow in any connection. I mean, so again, you know, Dr. Underwood, I'm sorry, I, I never realized or knew that the E Commission existed. Otherwise, I would have brought this endeavor over to the commission. For us, we were at an advantage point, and I wanted to maximize that advantage point by using our, our village's daughter, in this case, Senator Telo, I think we, we reached out to her. She was very receptive to us in a very short order, in basically two months' time, we were able to turn what many mayors have attempted to do in terms of trying to get the conversion of the English to the tomorrow, Inalana to Inalan. So again, the Inalan community, of course, is very receptive and embraced this concept. And I'm very glad to hear that it seems like there's a positive approach. So a lot of the mayors are, are being receptive in this way. So again, you know, all the efforts being done by the office of Senator Telo and your, your agency, Dr. Underwood, we appreciate that. Thank you very much for, again, trying to perpetuate the culture, maintain it. I know it's still a lot of young, young, young folks here. I know they're embracing this, but more importantly, I think once you start establishing them up on signs, people start pronouncing it, and before you know it, they're, they're saying it not clearly. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
We have enough issues as it is, but I want to thank you. So actually, that includes the, the, that concludes the formal part of this. I want to ask anyone who's here who wants to make a point, they can come up and introduce yourself and make your point. Anyone? Yes, sir.
There was one that says, does anybody here know how they name San Rita? Way back when I was a little boy growing up, that area has always been San Rita. Within our village, we have San Antonio and San Vicente and San Rosa, which made it develop now. So one slight deal that I would like to mention about their, their recommendations. I would like to keep Sumai as one Sumai and just keep Sarita separate of San Rita. In a way, we're not going to confuse the word Sumai from other people. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. That's, that's a very important. Anyone else want to say something? Please feel free to come up. No questions? No answers? No answers? How about anyone on Zoom? Anyone on Zoom? We have some customers on Zoom, anyone on Zoom asking a question?
Hey, Dr. Underwood, the question I have is that what is the timeline that your commission is looking at in terms of which is longer, totally in a, in a timeline?
Yeah, six months. Six months. So the, the first three months are pretty easy, say, in, in the streets of, so the village names are, uh, some are going to be complicated, but they're easy. It's the following three months when we get into the place names, that's going to be a little bit hard, you know? I just ran into a young man out there, and I was talking to him, and he was saying, you know, Mrs. Britannia, that's my mother-in-law, that's my name, Mrs. Britannia was my teacher, and of course, I know your wife. And I said, oh, that's good. I said, where do you live? He says, RR Croods. Well, what's going to happen to RR Croods? We go through this. There's going to be like a real strong lobby to keep RR Croods. Did RR Croods put that, another name out of focus? Those are, those are not easy questions, you know? But we have to ask them, we do have to ask them. So that's a, that's a, that's a, that might be a little bit more complicated, but it might be an ongoing process. Maybe we don't take it up now, but we may take it up in a couple of years. It's the same thing here with agat, where's old agat? Where's new agat? Why do we have a new agat? What happened to the old agat? Where's Peneli? Where's Bagacho? What, what was the original name for Nimitz Beach? You know? So all of these things are kind of open to that possibility. And they'll be, just like when we call a meeting, just like what is present here this evening? Somebody will remember something, and somebody will remember a story, and then they're going to relay it. And we're all going to be enriched by it. And that's, that's the, the, the part of this as well. So is there any, yes, go ahead.
Will the districts be changed as well?
The what?
The districts? You know, like the southern, central, and the northern?
No, no, that's, that, they, when, I, I use the word district and municipality and village, they're all kind of interchangeable, but in reality, I think the, the, the appropriate name is not the village Talapofu, it's a district. Because the, and it's important to understand this part too. The reason why that is important for the legislature to establish the district names is because there's voters in that district. So you want to know who's in who's, who gets to vote for you as mayor, and who doesn't get to vote for you as mayor. That's why that, that, the term district is important because that, the legal implication of that is connected to elections. The other thing is it's connected to services. So in some places, that's not much of an issue, but in other places it is. Like part of Lejan is really in Mangilo, but the Mangilo part of Lejan thinks they're in Baragana. And maybe they're asking for, and, and some, some of those people continue to register and vote in Baragana, but in actuality, the, the boundary might actually cut them out. So that's why that distinction is really critical in some areas, and it's, it's not an easy thing. And I know that the mayor's council with the vice mayors, I think, are working on that project, right? On the, on the, on outlining the districts because some districts are, you know, are really large and it's not clear, like Lathi Heights, where's Lathi Heights? Where's Lathi Plantation? Who did they go to for services? Where did they vote? All of those issues are, have legal implications. So in addition to just reviving the, the place names and reviving the names of the villages, there's that issue to contend with as well. So I, I think the, the appropriate name is district. Okay, anyone else? Or anyone on Zoom? Did anyone ask a question on Zoom? They're all good observers. Well, thank you, Zoom. Nobody asked a question on Zoom. Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
I'd just make an announcement. If you haven't already, we just kindly asked that you sign a, a sign and sheet over there, and we also have some comment sheets, if you'd like to fill one out, or if you'd like to take some copies for your constituents. You can always give them to me at the end of the session, or have people come to our office and deliver their comment sheets, or of course, connect with us through our Facebook, our website, and our email if your villagers have any other questions. So thank you very much for being here today.
Okay, Suswiko, you know, just, just as, just as a one final reminder,